I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Town Council. It's the 13th day of June at exactly 7:00 p.m. We do have a quorum, and we will be able to conduct business tonight. All councilmen are present. I would also like to recognize Town Clerk Gray and Building Clerk Nguyen-Schweimer. Thank you very much. Could you please stand for the pluggible deejays?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know this is going to be lab now, so try not to yell. First of all, I would like to receive a motion to reconvene our meeting. So if I could have a motion, councilman?
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay.
Mr. Merrill, can you please use your microphone?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, Councilwoman Merrill, you made a motion to approve the agenda. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilman Denny. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Before we go on, I just under an announcement proclamation. We've kind of changed our -- is that me making all that noise?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're going to get used to this eventually. We've changed our agenda just a little bit, just to kind of help the flow better and give more opportunity to the council and the residents to speak. So if it seems a little different tonight, for those who have been coming a long time, it is. So I'm going to try to get through this. So the next item on the agenda is any announcements or proclamations, and I do have one announcement. Eric, if you can stand up, this is Eric Heep. He's from Silver Star Communications, and he needs our support. So if you'd like to let him know what you're doing, that'd be great.
Thank you. We have -- the Wyoming Broadband Council has $70 million up for grant, and that is to supply high-speed internet to the premise, to the home. And the minimum is 100 by 100, so that's very good speed. Most of the area up here is copper fed, so you're probably only getting 25/3. So in order to get this grant, we need letters of support from the community in order to put in with the application and try to get those funds for the grant. So I'm here tonight, I have some letters, I can pass them around afterwards, and we can sign those and talk about any future construction or anything like that. But we'd like to get the residents' support, we've got the county commissioner's support, we've got the mayor's support, and I'd like to give you guys support letters.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're excited about that. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public comment section, and that is three minutes per comment, per resident. And just a reminder that there's no council discussion or debate during that time. That's an opportunity for the council to listen. And so do we have any public comment tonight? Anything that's not already on the agenda that you'd like to talk about? Okay, all right. We will move on.
I have a comment.
Oh, do you want to come up here?
Yeah.
Just three minutes?
Just three minutes. Could you state your name for the record?
I'm Brian Hall.
Okay.
I live in Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming.
Thank you.
Just, I probably have a few comments, but haven't been to a meeting in a while, and maybe this is on your agenda, but I've been actually around town knocking on doors with a good friend of mine who's running for association, an association position. And other than the association fees and the, you know, we know the discrepancy there, it's, everybody's not happy with the roads.
Okay.
And I'm just, maybe I'm bringing this back because I just heard talking to several, several people. Is there any chance we could have a committee that would look at this? It seems like we have all these different projects we're working on, and I, you know, 500,000, 600,000, 400,000. I start adding these up, and I'm like, okay, we're close to out of money here. Can we, can we put a committee together and prioritize our roads and what we're going to do with that? I just think we have, 95% of this community has no clue what's going on. And a good example is, we had a meeting, I couldn't get to it, we were talking about one bridge supposedly, and the feedback I got was we talked about a different bridge. The confusion in the community about that one thing tells me we need to have some coordination and organization. We have a lot of people in the community that could help do this, and just, I just hope we will consider before we start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars where the biggest impact is going to be. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And, sorry, getting lost. So this is to adopt the consent agenda. And so the consent agenda has the following items in it. It is the dispersments, which is paying our bills, community board appointments, and that is Rand Better for the Finance Advisory Board, which will expire in 2026, Martin Mushawak for the Finance Advisory Board in 2026, Zach Edwards, the Finance Advisory Board 2026, Paul Bordwell, Natural Resource Board 2026, Victor Padilla, Natural Resource Board 2026, and Stephen Crandall, the Water Utility Board 2026, Mike Black, Planning and Zoning 2026, and Larry Johnson, Planning and Zoning. Larry is moving from an alternate position, which is a one-year term, to a full member, which is a three-year term, and he'll expire in 2026. Next item on the, in the consent agenda is the dispatch report, and then the court So if I could get a motion, or, I'm looking at Kristin. This is the first time I've done this.
So you can ask her comments?
Ask her comments first. So is there any questions about any of those, or any comments on any of them, before we do?
That's a silly question.
Okay.
Sammy Wells, I live here in the range. What's a dispatch report?
So it's just renamed from the sheriff's report? Because it wasn't just the sheriff's report, it's actually the dispatch?
Everything that's dispatched. So it was EMS, fire, so, yeah. So it was a little confusing because it said sheriff, but it's not really what it was. All right. Good question, though. Excellent question. Any other questions on this section? All right. So if I could just get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Merrill. Right?
Oh, sorry.
A motion made by Councilwoman Denny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, this is a public hearing, and this will be presented by Chairman Black. So if you would like to come up to the podium, Chairman? Thank you for being here. Congratulations, three more years. Congratulations, three more years.
Condolences.
Yeah. We appreciate you.
The Planning and zoning board received a lot of combination application on March 22nd, 2023, in Thomas Stewart Endeavour, Trasket Park 140, Hillside Way, Plat 13, lots 59 and 60. Above next to lots, and the plat was surveyed by Sherbal, Surveyor Sherbal, LTD, 46 West Third Avenue, at in Wyoming. If there's any questions to that, we have Mr. Carl Sherbal is here to answer questions after a few remarks here. The letter was sent to all landlords of the plat, the lot number within 300-foot radius, a plat with 13 lots, 59 and 60, as per the ordinance. During the third day of public hearing period, the planning and zoning board received only one written correspondence against a lot combination from an individual residing in a completely different plat further than 300 feet from the required requirements. Furthermore, during our public hearing meeting on May 10th, 2023, there are no objections. The dissent, the person wanted to have less density, well, combining those lots fulfills that purpose. So we're happy that we really had no objections in the review of the letter properly. The planning and zoning board worked within the parameters of the town of Star Valley Ranch ordinance, and can't find any detriment, anything detrimental to the surrounding properties, nor any ordinance within our purview of the board that permits the board deny the application. The planning and zoning board hereby recommends that the town council approve the lot combination for Thomas Stewart Endeavour, Trasket 140, Hillside Way, Plat 13, lots 59 and 60, to become Plat 13, Lot 90. Any questions or concerns from the town council or from the general public here?
Any questions? Council? Okay. I think we're good.
I missed a surprise brookie for me for that.
Sorry. I know. If there's no comments, could I get a motion to accept the P&amp;Z recommendation and approve the lot combination?
I move we accept the P&amp;Z board's recommendation and approve the lot combination.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ellis and seconded by Councilwoman Denny. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is, we have two ordinances. These ordinances have been posted for more than 10 days. This is the, and so I'm not sure if the council would be willing to do this, but could I get a motion to read the ordinances by title?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And that was, Councilwoman Denny made the motion. Councilwoman Merrill made the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's okay. And make sure I get this right.
That was a trick question.
I know. I get a lot of them tonight. So, all right. So the councilman will, we have two ordinances. Councilwoman Ellis will read the first one, and, not read the ordinance, but read it by title, explain it, and then we'll move from there.
Ordinance 2023-06 is an ordinance providing operating and capital budgets for the town of Star Valley Ranch for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30,
Could I get a motion?
I move we approve the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the ordinance. I'll open this up for questions now, before we vote. Does anyone have any questions on the appropriations?
Do you have any numbers to show us?
Yep, we can put those up there.
Thank you. What's the road budget?
Rand, did you have something to say?
Well, you know, I asked you first.
Okay, well, if you, do you want to come up here and state your name, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm late. I got stuck in traffic. I was wearing the rations again with the plat 20.
Okay, there.
And I've been here for the last two months, this is the third reading, and I have very great concerns of snow removal. Suggested the amounts that should put into the budget. And we have, we have two.
Can I find it? Page 18? Well, it's separated into a couple places. So, Kristin, can you kind of, where's the road specifically?
The road's operation expenses is under expenses in the third line down.
So 757,984. We also put two, hold on.
For the repair ends, no removal?
Yeah.
That's not going to work.
It's substantially more than we've had, spent.
The budget can't pass until that's corrected.
We also put 200,000 in for emergency use, I believe?
It's not enough.
That's a different place?
It's not 2 million dollars. We have the road repairs in my, just in my plat alone.
All right, what's our total budget?
2.4.
Our entire budget is 2.4. I don't know how we could spend 2 million just on snow removal.
No. How much did you spend last year?
Our year isn't over yet.
And, well, all right, let's go back to the season.
Okay.
So I figured that the town ran out of money in January, and it got worse. So what did you spend for that bottom budget?
So we've had this discussion at the last two meetings. We did not run out of money, so, okay.
Numbers talk, but it makes walk. What's the bottom line?
We've already.
This is insufficient, and it's irresponsible physically to pass this budget the way it sits. And you need to go back to the drawing board, you got to figure out where you're going to get this money. And I also would like to see, all right, so a balance sheet consists of income, expenses, and shareholders' equity. The citizens of this town are the shareholders, so what's left over in the bank?
We understand.
That doesn't work. Numbers talk. This is the meeting, we're talking about the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is the accountant here that does the budget?
No. The town clerk and the finance board do the budget.
You cannot pass this budget too. No. If you do, you're irresponsible physically. And Mr. Denny, it's good to see you finally after six months.
Well, thank you.
You should be here at least nine months out of the year, sir.
And whose opinion is that?
The town.
Okay, then I'll quit.
You should, you should get the hell out of this company.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
I'll stop.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Any other, any other questions from the audience? Who is, who are you pointing? Oh, Rand, sorry.
First of all, just to address that a little bit, the financial advisory board more than we have, more than anybody else has prior years for budget, and we put an extra 200,000, which is already Rand Better, what, 15?
To residents.
But we put extra money in in case this means next year, and we put an extra headcount in, I believe, to help with that. So there's additional resources that have been put in. But my main question I wanted to ask is just to, when I was at the meeting two weeks ago, it seemed like a spending spree, and everything was going through and throwing in the budget. Just because we budgeted a provision for it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so just want to make sure that's clear publicly. I'm sure other priorities will come up, I mean, to be able to shuffle those around a little bit. But I'm also concerned about the, the snow, I leave for the winter, but I've, it's kind of like, like the gentleman said, it's been outstanding people. I had a widow tell me that she was in tears every time a snow plow came by, because she actually got three foot, they're bigger. So there are things that need to be done, but my main concern is that we're not locked into spending money now, just because of the provision of the budget based on some specific actions. So if we don't make the snow removal, let's not spend it, for example.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Sure question. My name is Chuck Hewens, Plat 6. On the revenues, how can property tax be in red? 520,000. It should be income, not.
It's a change. So if it's in the red, it was changed from second reading.
Second reading.
It's just, it's not necessarily reduced.
I don't understand what you're saying.
The property tax went down by $30,000 in estimated revenue.
But it's still 520,000, right?
Correct.
Just a refined estimate.
Yeah, it is a refined estimate.
Did I add it in?
Pardon?
Is that in the figure of 24,000 or 25,000?
2 million, 4 million.
It is in there, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. And I do have an answer to how to plow the roads so that you don't block people's driveways. When you need that, let me know.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Let's get this man out.
Chuck.
I'm Dave Sack, and I'm actually the chairman of the financial advisory board. I've been working with the council and the town staff to come up with a budget. The concern is around the plowing and the road service worker by the town council, by the town staff, by me, that was work, and we did put a lot more money in the budget for this year. It's not, not what we want, and probably not what everyone else would want, but we also have a certain amount of money, and we have other functions like safety and water and blah, blah, blah. So the percentage increase year over year will actually be circa 30%. A couple hundred thousand dollars in extra money that will get worked on to figure out where it can be deployed, and a couple of more headcounts. So I just want to make sure people understand that it was a tough winter, and we're not doing anything. It's far from the case. It was a tough winter, and we are investing money prudently within the resources that we have, allowing the town to still have, to your point, equity. And I just want to remind everyone, just because you raised a good question, it's not called stock equity, it's our town, but it is our reserves. How much cash do we have? And it's published every single month on the, on the website. It's a boring little spreadsheet, but it's on there.
Is that the number right now?
The total is, it's, I can show you a website if you'd like.
Well, I'd like everybody else to hear it also.
Okay, and a lot of people hopefully aren't looking at the financials we've put working and putting away on the, on the thing. So, you know, it'd be good if you looked at what they were, were trying to find what they're looking for.
I appreciate it.
It's on there. And we do have stock equity, we have capital reserves, they spend a lot of time thinking about what to do with them. I spend a lot of time thinking about what to do with them, and we are deploying some towards this room, not as much as some would like, but I think a better, bigger amount for the floor, I'd put in a, we might, mention service levels.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget?
I have one more. Just a question. I, actually, I think, put this gentleman back here for us, it's a pretty valid point. My, my question is, it looks to me like we're getting, I don't know, we were like getting 400,000 in property taxes, and now we're estimating 520. We know our taxes, or our property values and taxes have gone up substantially, some of us probably in the 100% range over the last couple of years. My question is, it says on that sheet, we're taking eight mils. We don't, if I understand this correctly, we don't have to take eight mils. Why are we taking eight mils?
Well, Dave, did you want to answer that, or I could?
Yeah, if you don't mind, let me, let me try to answer the property. It's a good question. Property taxes have come up throughout the valley, my personal property taxes are up just like everybody else in the room, over the last two years, probably 90%. And so if you look at the amount of property tax revenue that the town is getting, sure enough, it's gone from 280, I think, a couple of years ago, to 520. Pretty, oh, that's a lot. That's the man. So, yeah, it went from 288,000 a couple of years ago to a projected 520,000, as you just saw this next year. We wish that were the simple end of the story, but it's not. We have a new deal with the fire department, and we now have the same deal that every other municipality has with our local fire department. We have to give them three mils of the total. We used to want to give them about 50,000 a year. So for example, in 2022, the town got 290,000 property taxes, paid the fire district 40,000. We kept 244, 250,000 for ourselves. And that goes towards all the things that we do. This next year, sure enough, we're going to get 520,000 on the top line, we're going to pay over 200,000 to the fire department because they get three eights of 520,000, which is right around 200,000. So we're going to get about 320,000. So the revenue to the town is only up 70,000 over the last two years for property taxes. We're all in, but the piece that was attributable to the town is the vast majority of 150,000 of the increases going to the fire department, which is a contractual agreement at this point, and 75 is staying in the city. So, excuse me. So, you know, we could look at whether we do something with that 70,000. It would be about 56 dollars per lot. And frankly, given that we're heading into a recession, the property, the property taxes are probably going to fall back next year, and we all know our housing values are not playing up any longer, and we also know the sales taxes in a recession tend to decline. So at this time, what is worth my advice to the council was, I have, you know, 60 bucks back in my pocket, or does the town keep the 70,000 and see how this goes for another 12 months with the property taxes falling back, the valuations falling back. It seemed like an okay move because it wasn't a ton of money, even in aggregate, to go through that exercise. We paid to lower bills, and it has to raise the variety to have to recommend that, especially if you have to raise them next year, we were lower than, we'd be raising them in a recession, which is even worse than, than trying to get back to 56 dollars a lot. So anyways, that's the thinking that, in the discussion that's been placed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Can I just respond to that?
Sure.
So I've lived here three years. My homeowners' fees are doubled, my taxes are doubled. Now, the town that I live in has a chance to maybe help me out, 56 dollars. My question is, if we could go to 10 mils, how many of you would have voted for it to go to 10 mils?
We can't go to 10 mils.
If you could, though, would you have gone to 10 mils?
I don't.
Because you didn't have to go to eight, but you did.
That was done when the town was formed, you're right. And it's never changed.
So you voted for eight mils, and who did?
Oh, I don't know. That was in 2005.
2005, when the town was formed.
I'm talking about, do you have the option to do eight, something less than eight mils today?
And there was a vote.
There was a vote.
At the workshop. It was a motion put forward to reduce it.
Yes.
And the motion to reduce it was defeated.
So who voted to, did anybody vote for it, or?
I put it forward and voted for it.
Yes, Councilman Rock.
I would have voted no, because our roads are in bad shape. You've heard people talk about roads. So do you want to put 56 dollars towards roads or more snow, or whatever? What do you, what do you draw along?
If there was a plan, and I knew my roads were actually going to get better, then absolutely, I'd be happy to put 10 mils in. But if there's no plan, then I'm like, where is this going? Why are we doing it? There's no plan. So we're asking everybody to pay more than we actually needed to take, we're going to the max, and we have no plan. And that's, that's the frustration of, not just me, I bring the frustration of a lot of people in this community that feel like they don't know what's going on with their money. Like I said, double your taxes, double your association fees, and now the town is saying we're going to the max. Right? I couldn't do anything about the rest, but I happen to, I think we know all of you, so I'm kind of disappointed.
We're staying at the same mill, so the town's been established for 20, 17 years.
Yeah.
It's been 17, 17 years, we've seen.
So that's, well, is what you're telling me.
The dollars are way up.
You got 500 dollars.
Well, the week went on.
We're just blaming it on the fire department.
The costs are way up, too.
Sure.
So we, uh.
I, I did it. I, I don't have a whole solution. I'm just saying, the frustration of the town is, we're taking as much as we can, and we don't have a plan for what we're going to do with it. That's just.
Okay. We hear you. Okay, any countments from the council on the, on the actual ordinance that's here? All right, can I, we got the motions, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the following ordinance, which is.
I want to say something.
I'm sorry, but we're.
Just one quick statement.
No.
Step down. What happens if we don't have snow removal in the middle of January?
Sir, you've already asked your question. We've answered it. We're moving on with the agenda.
I understand that.
I am. No, you don't.
You guys should never have seconded, no town official should have seconded the budget. It should come from here. I think you should review it.
Okay. Next item is Councilman Rock. Do you want to introduce that ordinance, please?
Yes, this is Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Three dash O five, Title III Administration, Chapter Thirty-three Town Organizations. The, this is the first reading. The explanation of this update is the ordinance is an update to board organization to have consistency of form and language and to dissolve the Economic Development Board and reserve the subsection for future use.
Okay. So could I get a motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Three dash zero five?
Zero seven.
Oh, zero seven, sorry.
I saw them.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Rock and seconded by Councilman Merrill. Any discussion on this ordinance? Any questions we can ask, answer? Rand, did you have a question on this?
Since we're here and the topic's up, I've been asking for some time for Roads Advisory Board.
That's not on this agenda. It's not on this ordinance. It's not on this ordinance, yeah, sorry. This is just trying to get consistency between board to board, is all we're doing right now.
Start talking about the Economic Development Board and talk to the...
We need an ordinance written first. All right. All in favor say aye. Oops, sorry, we have a... We have one more question.
Yeah, my name is Don Bailey. I have some general questions, and most of them are related to the P and Z Board. My general question is, I understand and why you want to do consistency, but it's also to me like you're trying to put a square page or a round L. So Section Thirty-three oh ones, which has to deal with the Planning and Zoning Board, and the Planning and Zoning Board along with the Water Board are two most important boards in a town. When you drive into the town, what you see is a reflection of the Planning and Zoning Board and what they do. Thirty-three oh one has a section in there that you're going to add, of whom the majority are going to be members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Now, I understand other boards may want non-residents, but on the Planning and Zoning Board, I think only town residents should make the decision on ordinances and building codes as far as the town goes. I drive through Alpine, I drive through Acton, I look, but I have no desire to go get on their board and tell them something. And it's, well, we had had one gentleman from out of town want to get on the board, but he was a contractor, and I thought that was dubious. But thanks to not being a resident, he couldn't be on. It's my opinion that only residents should be on the board, of this particular board. Other boards can make up their own line. The other one I have concern on is Thirty-three oh seven, Procedures and Objectives. If you read the body of that section, it is clearly a procedure. It is not a goal. Goals are something you hope to do. Procedures are something that you follow. The Planning and Zoning Board shall review requests for building permits. If it's a goal, well, we didn't do it, so no big deal. No, this is a procedure. Somebody wants to be on the Planning and Zoning Board, could look at the process through here, do I want to be on it, do I not want to be on it? This is some of my duties. And by the way, the Planning and Zoning Board is a board that takes a lot of dedication. I was on it for a number of years. Most boards meet once a month, they meet twice a month, they review permits. So generally, it looks like four meetings a month. So anyway, I believe that the, should not be changed to objectives, but should be left as procedures. Thirty-three oh eight, on the flow process. This section is, I guess, questionable in the way, it's, it is in state statutes, a lot of this, it's in our ordinance, but also again, here it's a reminder that there is a process on annexations, plan amendments that must be done. I would recommend that section stay.
Can I ask you a question, Don? That section, it is other, it is in the, in another ordinance, isn't that is correct?
It's, it's in the plan amendment.
Yeah.
It's in the variance, it's in a lot of sections.
Yeah, and I think it was confusing.
But I don't think duplication here hurts.
Okay.
If somebody's reviewing the process, they can look at this and say, hmm, yes, I need to do that, rather than be thumbing through the ordinance. I understand this duplication, but I don't think it hurts to leave it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good call. All right, thank you.
Can you put this, what he's talking about, up on the table? If we're talking about the planning and zoning, I want to know about it. Seth, I like, if we're talking about planning and zoning, I'd like to speak about that.
This is specifically about the board, design of the board.
Like, members?
Yeah, it mentions the members.
What is exactly this ordinance? Because I...
Go back up. Yeah, go right, right there is where it talks about the, how they're appointed to the board.
Yeah, I want to talk about that because I saw the commissions of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Mike Lack expires this month. Is he in this room?
Yeah, he's right behind you. He's right behind you, and he's, and he's already been renewed.
All right. Do you find I'm trying to be the Planning and Zoning Chair again?
He already is.
I like to put myself in that consideration.
You're, okay. Then you need to put in your name if you want to be a member of that board, but right now, we don't have any openings, so.
It expires, if there's an opening, it...
We just renewed it. We, it was renewed at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, shit.
Okay. All right. Lee, do you want to come up?
Basically, I'm here to concur with what Don Bailey said. I was also a member of the P and Z Board for ten years, and strongly believe that people that are directing the growth and the development of the town, Star Valley Ranch, I'm going to start on that ranch as well. And we've got to worry about conflict of interest, should a contractor want to be on that, on the Planning and Zoning Board? I think that would be a conflict of interest. As far as the, again, it's about changing the word objectives from procedures, it seems to be that an objective is something that you've put down perhaps at the first of the year, at least that, that's in my history in, in business, that you've set an objective that you're going to do over and above what your normal duties are. And I think as council members, you probably do the same thing. So I don't understand the reason for changing the word from procedures to objectives. And also, I agree with Don as far as the flow process that was basically put in place so there would be a public hearing should a development or annexation come in front of the P and Z Board, and it normally goes there first, and they then have a public hearing, and hearing, and make the recommendation to the council, and then the council reviews it, so.
But it's already somewhere else. This was just duplication, right? This is just duplication.
I understand the duplication, but...
Right. I think, I think the confusion was, if it's already some, when we're, when we have an annexation application, we would go to the land usage ordinance, not to, an administrative ordinance to follow that rule. And so it didn't make a lot of sense, but, I mean, I think that your, your point is, is well taken.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you. Any other questions on this? All right, council? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the mayor and council, and this is an opportunity for the mayor and the town council to give any kind of updates that might be going on. And so we'll kind of start with Councilman Rock, if that's okay?
I just had a quick comment, sorry, about the last ordinance, that we were doing the procedures to objectives for consistency among all the boards, that it certainly is something we can discuss, maybe instead of it being objectives, they should all be procedures. So, did hear that comment. We got RRB this past weekend, it was a great success, that was for an RRB event. Other than that, I don't really have any other topics to chat about.
All right. Councilman Denny?
The only topic I got is, is a intent. Besides the road, Kristen's going to, Kristen's, Kristen's going to talk about the road board. I'm working on a public safety board that are conferred committee, and this, this public safety committee would do things like safety days, but also provide advice on safety on roads, safety on fires, emergency response activities, whatever. So we need some help from the community on, in board to advise how to improve the safety posture of the, of the town. And so we'll come out with a, with a new ordinance to cover our public safety committee in the future.
Okay. You have a question? There's no questions.
The safety committee addressed the speeding that goes on in the town on the arterials, and is there some way that we can address that without having to put in speed bumps on Cedar Creek Drive or Hardman? Speed bumps, nobody likes.
Safety on roads would be one of their objectives, or, and if they want to recommend the rules, just to speed regulations, whatever, or to license plates, have licenses on people over sixteen, or assistance in typing, or whatever, all those safety issues on road safety would be under that purview, provide recommendations.
Is there, I guess my question is, what can we do to slow people down? Because people know it's twenty-five through the whole town, but they don't observe it. And they really don't observe it on Cedar Creek Drive, and that has a lot of volume for traffic. And it's not just the people that live here, it's, it's contractors, people who come in, you know, the Shamrock Foods is a semi truck that delivers up to the, wherever they deliver, wherever there's a restaurant here. And today, they were going, going out of the town, and they had us by house at least fifty or more miles per hour. Now, I mean, they just whiz by. And I know a lot of people here in town don't live on the arterial, but the people that do live on the arterial, I think we have, we have an expectation of having a nice city around us. We, you know, it's like living on Highway eighty-nine some days and being ten feet from it. And so if your safety committee could come up with some ideas on how to express that to the community, that once you get in here, there's not a fire anywhere, you can drive twenty-five on all the streets, and then the people who live on arterials have a quieter street and a safer street.
Yeah, I agree that safety, you know, speeding is an issue.
It is.
Well, for my house, I do have the famous speed bump.
I know.
Yeah, at least, you know, I hear the little light get that thing, so. And it is a speed bump, so.
After this winter, we have some, on Cedar Creek, we have some depressions again, and so when the cars go up and down, it's bam bam, bam bam, bam bam, ever so many feet.
So that'll be one of the objectives for this committee, they will also be encouraged to go out and find funding. All the community suggests that they have that in their role, is to roads, help find money for roads, and so I'm not going to, I'm not going to prejudge what they're going to come up with, but that will be one of their objectives.
Yeah, when you mentioned safety, that was why I, I scream about that all the time. In fact, I hate even mentioning it because I think what I want is really, oh, God, there she is.
Well, I'm drafting that, well, I'm drafting that, and your face is in the tunnel, I see that.
Okay. Volunteer, yeah, there you go. Volunteer. The only, the only real update I have is, this morning we had, we had a joint council employee meeting, which was extremely successful. We spent about half of that time going through our emergency operations plan, the town does have one, did kind of a desktop, made assignments so people really understand whether it's a little teeny emergency, or we don't call it teeny now, but if it's an ice storm, or if, if it's a big deal where we get the county and the state involved. So we spent time on that. We also spent a great deal of time on roads. Water seems to just kind of flow, you know, as you'd say about roads, a great deal of time on roads. So I think it was, it was an excellent meeting, and, and we plan on doing a follow-up. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. Councilman? Mayor?
Okay, so safety day is July eighth, it'll be from nine to noon. We're going to have it over by the First Responder Building. We're also going to start a farmer's market. It begins on Saturday, July fifteenth, it'll go from eight to eleven, and we'll have multiple vendors, and if there's any suggestion on vendors, open to that. As far as road board, we're definitely talking about it and in the process of getting that underway as well.
Okay. Councilman Rock?
The Planning and Zoning Board is going to be looking at two new single-family homes tomorrow, a deck repair, and quite frankly, I forgot the foreline. And they're also looking at revising some ordinances, determining whether the town will move to the updated twenty-twenty-one International Building Codes, International...
IRC.
IRC and IBC. The Finance Board...
You guys followed the two thousand and eighteen first.
Okay, go ahead.
Finance Board, you've already heard the basis on the Finance Board, it's coming on, and the master plan is being worked on as we speak.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can I ask one quick question back on safety? Is it possible to get the Mill Ranch Crossing open to single lane traffic? That's kind of a safety issue, having, having a couple of crossings over Cedar Creek.
We'll let your board look at that and look at our liability in opening, and so, but not a decision the council would make today. All right, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Just for the benefit of everyone here, we talked about, talking about roads more. I need to know people in the community with roads experience, design, maintenance, construction, I don't know, whatever this gentleman mentioned. I'd like to get those names.
Engineers would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, so pass them along to Pierceman, so we can kind of start about the creation of this board, but I understand.
Okay.
Since you're still open, may I ask one more quick?
No.
All right, first it's a question, and then it's an answer. A town can have a police force, correct?
That is correct.
You don't have to use sheriffs.
That is correct.
Okay. If you had a volunteer police force, and you buy an old police vehicle and a new radar gun, and you have volunteers that handle it, you could make a bit of money off of giving tickets, and that could probably cover things, and then after a year or so, when people get tired of paying tickets, maybe we, they won't have that police force, just an idea.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm going to adjourn. Hey, wait a minute. Where the hell is the comment section? It was at the end of the meeting.
It's at the beginning.
It was at the beginning.
It was at the beginning, since this meeting.
Last month it was at the end.
Can I get a motion to...
I have something to talk about.
A did. It's been first and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.